Got him whipped into shape, right?
Uh, there's been some whipping. I don't know which one.
And if I can, I want to echo what Paul said, Mr. Chairman, just for a second. Take the point of personal privilege, I think they call it, down the street, and say thank you. I think one of your group is going to be... I made an announcement last week. He's going to be leaving soon. We're a better place because of you. Thank you. You will be missed. We appreciate, but wish you the very best in your life after the county. And for all of us who are sooner or later going to leave the county, we'll watch closely to see how much fun you have, okay?
Thank you very much.
Do we have... Here's a clicker. Okay, let's see if we can... It was kind of fun. Middle of December of last year now, 2018, there was an article in The Republic talking about Webster had justice as their word of the year. Because of the turning of the news cycle and the different applications of the word "justice," they said it was up 74% from the year before. Justice is a fickle mistress. I know nothing about mistresses, but I do know a little bit about being fickle, I think. And we work hard not only to dispense justice, but to help the public feel good about the process. I just appreciated it being part of what's being discussed out in the rest of the world, so.
That's justice, not justice of the peace, right?
We will take whatever variation on the term we can get. To give you a little context, when we talk about our budgetary needs for our next cycle, we want to quickly talk about where we are, what's going on, what we've got planned for the next cycle and beyond. I'm going to cut to the chase. The bottom line is, we don't think that we need any additional money for next year's budget. If we are careful with the monies that we had this last year, if we're wise with what we do, we think we'll be able to meet our goals, our expectations, and accomplish what we want to be able to accomplish next year. We did want to talk just briefly about our revenues. We get revenues from three different sources. General fund money, Fund 100. Special revenue, funding, which is a piece of some of the filing fees that people pay when they come and visit us in our courts. And then we have grant money coming from AOC. And it's interesting, our folks did some statistics for us. Out of the Fund 100 money, 92% of that goes towards personnel. Of the special revenue, 81% of that goes towards personnel. Out of the grant money, which only accounts for 3% of our total, that's where we actually spend more money on technology than other places. Because the operation and the people... Two of them, most of them. But we run a lean ship, and we're proud of that. And we're thrilled that we're able to say to you, we don't need additional monies next year, but we do need to give you a warning. We've got some projects that will be coming our way shortly. We have gone paperless with all of our civil filings. We need to do the same thing with criminal filings. ISIS, which is a system I'm sure you all have heard of. A lot of different offices have a piece of it. We've got a piece too. It needs to be rewritten. When we get ready to work on those two projects, we'll first look at our own revenue streams, or our existing ones. We'll look to our resource partners next. But we may need to come in a couple of years and have a conversation with you, depending upon what we find as we work towards that day over the next little while. So, just FYI.
Appreciate the heads up.
To give you a sense of our cases, I do need to point out, last year on this slide, we were doing calendar year numbers. Everything that we do is fiscal years. We've converted over. But the change from fiscal year '17 to '18 were up 5.3% in the filings. Our civil cases are up over 25%. Evictions are up almost 5%.
Let me stop you on that one. What do you attribute... That's a big number, 25%, big percentage. What do you attribute that to?
I think there's a couple of factors, but one of them nationwide on debt collectors, the last few years, there was a lot of scrutiny. Therefore, that industry slowed down their activities. I think a lot of that has been worked through, and it's picking back up again. So, this is not... Well, and it's interesting, because down at the bottom, I'm going to tell you that so far this fiscal year, from July to November, we're up another 14% on civil filings. So, and you can see the statistics. For most of these, we're staying in somewhat the same range. Criminal is down about 6.5%. We're down in detective orders, about 4%, about 3% with criminal traffic. Civil traffic is about the same, but I want to point out, 337,589 cases were filed last year. And I know you know this, but we're a volume business. That's the world that we live in. So far, and this one I find fascinating, and I don't know that it's going to continue, but so far this cycle, from July through November, DUIs are up over 17%. Evictions are up over 13%. And again, civil filings again continue to increase over 14%. So, we continue with the trend we've had the last few years of volumes coming up. If you recall, when they had photo radar on the freeways, we were very busy. When that went away and the economy changed, we went down. But the trend the last few years has been this and that, so.
Keith, what spend of time was that 17.3% up for DUIs?
17.3% from July through November of last year. From the previous same period, so from July through November.
That's only a six-month period, roughly?
Five months, yeah.
Wow. That's scary.
And that's why I say I don't know that it's going to continue.
But that's not necessarily alcohol-related. That could be someone who has a medicinal marijuana card, or...
Absolutely, yes. And that's one of the things, just an FYI, there's going to be legislation this year that may move some of those other not necessarily alcohol-related cases from Superior Court to us. So, we're aware of legislation that will make most of those cases misdemeanors. About half of them get filed in our court in Maricopa County right now, about 7,000. We could see those go, about another 7,000 in Superior Court. Depending upon what that legislation does, we can see those cases coming to...
Well, that's concerning, Judge. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, if we can, continue to get updates on this, because I think this needs to be shared with Mr. Penzone and law enforcement. And we'll keep the fact that Mr. Gardo's part of the 17.3% out for now, but...
I do my part, sir.
Coffee?
We also need to talk about another thing that's happening that may make a difference moving forward with our caseload. We've got two pilot programs on small claims underway in our courts right now. AOC, the Arizona Office of Courts, has set time standards for all of our different case types. Throughout the state, the justice courts were not meeting the time standards for small claims. So, they have... We are testing statewide in different areas these two pilot programs to try and increase or reduce the amount of time it takes for a conclusion in a small claims case. We have two courts in the first pilot, the Hacioma and the Manistee Court. And the pilot that they're testing makes considerable changes. To give you a sense, we have about 10,000 cases a year in small claims in our 26 courts. A little over 1,000, between 1,000 and 2,000 of those cases have a hearing. The rest of them are managed on paper, that get perfected and moved through. This pilot proposes a hearing for every one of those cases. That would include even when both parties agree to a stipulated settlement, they would have to come in a peering court to get that stipulated settlement put in the judgment. The other pilot only makes a couple of changes to where we are today. It will basically reduce the time to get defendants served and reduce the time before the court can dismiss a case because of inactivity. We hope that that's the one that will prevail in the end, but we'll talk about in the slide later. We're preparing, because we don't know which way AOC is going to go on this. And it could mean an increase of at least three times as many hearings being held for small claims cases as currently are being held. We're working to try and help them understand it's not just our work that we're concerned about, but it's forcing litigants to come to court when they don't have to. It's not going to leave a good taste in people's mouth. We should have a decision this fall, followed this year on that. Please, I'm sorry.
Two for Resi.
What's driving that pilot from AOC? Is somebody prosecution defendant, whatever. Who's driving that? Is that like a citizens group saying it's unfair, so?
Well, the initial...
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor, the initial push is to reduce the time, but as they started looking at time, additional goals came into play. Such as, we may have some litigants who struggle with understanding, therefore, let's make it more understandable. We have put more in writing for litigants. Well, let's bring them into the court and have the judge explain it to them. That kind of a logic is driving the increased hearings. We want all the litigants in our courts to be able to understand and have an appreciation for what's going on. But we don't know that it makes sense to necessarily require a hearing, especially if the parties are in agreement. Require a hearing if the disagreement doesn't really exist. So, we will see what AOC ultimately decides. That will be again later this year. We're optimistic that we're helping them understand the cost to the public, as well as the cost to the courts.
Yeah, hopefully the value that this is just a pilot, and maybe they'll see that this is not the way to go.
But we can speed it up without materially changing the rest of the world of the area, yes.
Exactly, Supervisor Hickman.
I think you mentioned the pilot projects are Hacioma and Manistee, which is in my district, right?
Yes.
So, were those courts picked for a certain reason to do the pilot? Were they... Are there a lot of cases, usual cases in those two courts that speak to having the pilots there? All I see is a lot of irritated people. Seriously, I mean, go ahead.
And I think if that's what the courts see, and I need to publicly say our appreciation to those two judges and their staff for willingness. AOC asked for these two courts to be the first pilot. They didn't... They do not necessarily statistically represent any different demographic or numbers than our other courts, but these were the two they asked for.
Even by caseload of those particular courts, alright.
But to make the point that we didn't think we needed to be as aggressive with the changes, all 24 of our other courts are participating in the second pilot, so we've got lots of good data prepared. Fair justice, the legislature passed a lot of bills last year. A lot of changes were made. We appreciate those changes. They changed the scope of where judicial officers get to operate. They moved it from this scope to this scope. They've given us more flexibility. They've given us more tools. But of course, when you have a change, there's consequences. We have spent this last year preparing for the first of this year with collecting and changing our databases so that we're able to accurately reflect what those new options are and document those new options. When you've got 337,000-plus cases, you have to document carefully what transpires. Nobody's going to be able to remember what they did a few months ago. So, the staff has worked hard on that. These are being rolled out this year. We've spent a lot of time in training for judicial officers, for the staff. We've had to help programmatically set those new boundaries carefully so our new judges are able to play within their expanded scope, but not go outside of that expanded scope. So, this is something that's taking place now. The impact of this will be felt certainly through this year and next fiscal year. We continue to work and are appreciative, but there's a lot of work to take advantage correctly of flexibility, so. The forms that law enforcement officers use to write tickets were changed last year. They're collecting more personal information. But that personal information now has allowed us to deploy e-notification. We're able to let litigants know, a reminder, you need to be in court next week. A reminder, you forgot to make a payment to the court last week. We have more communication opportunities with our litigants. Where this has been done in other jurisdictions, they've seen great results. We look forwards to coming back and giving you the statistics of how we think this is going to make a difference in our world too. But that just barely got deployed. We're excited about it.
Do you have an idea on what percent of the litigants are able to get these e-notifications?
Not yet.
Okay.
It is that new. We really don't have any statistics yet. And we hope that that number is going to increase though throughout this year, so. We've been able to work on our website, and we're now believe we're in conformance with Title VI of the federal requirements to have certain pieces of information and forms translated into Spanish. This was a concern for us last year. We feel we're in compliance. We feel good about where we are today with that. We continue to work with the Treasurer's Office on their new system. There's a lot of other good things. We just wanted to touch base on a couple of them to give you a sense. Yep, we need to speed up a little bit. We do want to talk to you about judicial officers and the training that we're getting. Every two years, and actually last week, thank you for the swearing-in ceremony that we were able to participate in with our new judges. We have five new judges. Every two years, we have four or five new judges, it seems like, in the last several cycles. Since 2012, 18 of our 26 courts have a new judge. That's 69% of our bench that showed up since the beginning of 2012. We spent a big investment with them. We've got 13 new pro temps. We're spending a bigger investment with them. And we've got 45 new hearing officers anticipating that AOC may make us hold some more hearings on small claims. And we had to prepare so that we won't be caught if that's the case. So, that's why that number is increased.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a question.
Supervisor Barney.
Go back one slide there. Just training for new judicial officers and staff. One of the things that, under your leadership and with the associate presider here and a new administrator, you know, this whole notion of consolidated versus co-located, I know that's something that's forefront of your conversations. We've got 26 independently elected officers, two of which are here. They all have divergent views. And I shouldn't say all, but there's divergent views on what works and what doesn't. There's also a wide range of efficiencies and caseloads. And while we can't, while each court is infungible, how do we get to a place with staff that is more, that creates more homogeneity? In other words, you know, staff should flex based on court demands. And I know that we talked ad nauseam about deputies and the backup that we provide and how each other, you know, the different judges support each other. There's a question in here. Just trying to figure out when...
Looking for the slide that has the answer for it. Go ahead.
Okay, well, good. At some point, you know, historically, there's been this mindset of silos, even in a... And I know there's different nuances around co-located or consolidated, different nuances around those words. At some point, we've got to get away from the silos that even exist in a co-located or consolidated court. And that involves cross-training of staff, because they're our biggest resource at the county, our best asset. Yet, we have challenges, and you have challenges, that then come to us from a funding standpoint relative to how we manage within your courts that asset and that resource. How do we get to get there? I mean, it's... I know it's... Maybe you've got a slide, but I just want to keep that on the forefront of our budget ideas, because ultimately, the only hammer that we have, and it could be a small one, it could be a big one, is our ability to appropriate dollars. And we recognize your constitutional authority, your elected rules, all that good stuff. And we don't want to get in your lane. On the other hand, sometimes that's the only way that we have to help you as a body of great men and women who have divergent views, find harmony. So, how do we do that? How do we do... We talk about training new staff, yet how do we train old staff who are sometimes stuck in the notion of, I work at this window, and I do one thing, and I don't talk to other people on other topics or other courts? And yet, that's not the 21st century way of doing business in Maricopa County. And with all of the electronic and technology integration, somehow we've got to accelerate that. Now, that's a tall order for you. What are you going to do?
You got that slide there?
Absolutely.
That was a softball.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Barney, thank you for talking about staff.
Sorry if that sounded like a rant. It's not. It's a big issue, though.
It is a big issue. And we're excited to spend time talking about staff, because we have made an investment in them, and we think things are better today, and we think things are going to be better tomorrow. But in a couple of slides, one of the things we're going to talk about is our governance structure. And is there a better way to work business moving forward? The Supreme Court has an administrative order that set up our governance. It's now 10 years old. There's one in Pima County for their governance, and then there's one for all of the other justice courts around the state. We've changed a lot in the last decade. We think we've gotten a whole lot better in the last decade. We want to get better in the next decade. At this point, I can't tell you the particulars. I wish I could, but I think that certainly is one of the options that we need to look at closely and see if we can improve consistency, if we can improve customer service. One of my comments coming up is we share the board's concern about customer service. We want to be as good as we can in that area. Having said that, I was thinking this last week. We're different. My world, when I was the assessor, if I had a constituent, if we had a consumer who came to the assessor's office and said, we want to split a piece of property, we could walk them through exactly what to do. When I have someone come to the front counter of a court and they say, tell me what to do, I have limitations put on what I can do. So, every situation is a little bit different. We can't give legal advice, but I work with my staff. I work with the other clerks that we have to try to help them feel more comfortable. It is appropriate to talk about process. When you get to a juncture in the road, and you can go left, or you can go right, we can't tell them which way to go, but we can point out that there are two options there. So, I think we are working on customer service, but we always do need to remember that we do have some unique limitations in the court that I didn't have to face at the assessor's office. And so, it's challenging, but there's also opportunities. And I'm sorry, that's a general answer, Supervisor.
You had a run for office. Oh, you did. That was a non-answer, but I know you don't have the answers, and I don't mean that at all derisively. Here's the punctuation. We've got the team in place to do it. Your leadership, your ability, your experience in navigating these complex environments will be critical. I believe you can do it. I may not be here to celebrate with you 18 years from now when you accomplish it, or 18 months, but I think you can do it. We also have the resources in the form of people. They just need a little bit of recalibration, and that's it. And it's going to start perhaps with some AOC intervention or involvement, but I think it's time to recalibrate, and that's it. And I think that as we talk about the going forward, as my colleagues look at the horizon of co-location, consolidated, and whatever the nuances of that means, it's going to require recalibration both with our elected colleagues as well as from a staff perspective. And I really, naively so perhaps, I believe we can get there. So, I... None of this is meant critically. And if it came across that way, sometimes it does, because I'm a court communicator, I apologize.
We... Mr. Chairman, Supervisor, it takes practice to get into that mode.
Yeah, you're doing a great job.
We appreciate the encouragement. We want to be the best we can. And there absolutely are opportunities. I think this governance discussion, I see some opportunities. I'm excited about where we may be able to go to move in the direction you're talking about. I like being optimistic about tomorrow, and I like people to encourage me to be better and the folks that I associate with to be better tomorrow. Thank you.
No, thank you, Supervisor Hickman.
And I think you were trying to get at it, I think, Danny, but am I hearing that you feel like there still might be some like statutory impediments to get where we're talking about? Because we are businessmen, and I think you touched the topic of as you were assessor, maybe you had some, what you felt were different rules than what your people underneath you have as clerks or associates of a specific court. That's what I remember when I was chairman, and we were looking at the windows and saying like, here's a window, just for the ether out there, here's a window with three people waiting in line. And there's two in front of our customers. There's two windows right there where those people aren't helping. And then what I heard was, well, that's because their cases are hooked to a specific court, you know, with this co-location. Is that still the issue? I mean, is it... And some people that are working those windows might say, hey, I was told not to do it, but there is a way to do it. Or is there not? I guess simplifying customer service to what occurs on the other side of the counter that the customers might not be understanding of.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Hickman, the short answer is, there's a couple of areas that were covered, I think, in your question. Some of that can be improved, but what I was trying to say is, is we can't give legal advice to litigants. So, we can't give them as much information as the assessor's office can give a consumer when they come in and ask for advice. We can't tell them that you ought to be a regular civil case as opposed to a small claims case. When you talk about customer service as far as serving with the public, we absolutely think we can do some good things there. We have learned some lessons in the past. We continue to learn lessons about being able to manage people at the counters in a timely fashion and quickly and get them to where they need to be. Again, with 337,000 cases every year, please don't misread what I'm going to say here. I think we do a heck of a good job with the vast majority of them. Are there some that we can improve? Are there some areas that we can get better at? Absolutely. And I think that the way we're structured can make a difference with that. But I don't know that we're ever going to get away from 26 independently elected judges. And the flexibility, the ability to respond to those judges' constituents in their... and the flexibility, the ability to respond to those judges' constituents in their precincts, and therefore, they're managing their caseload within the statutes, within the rules, but there's still flexibility that each court will be unique. Each court will try to meet the needs as directed by that elected official. So, you're always going to have some of that independence. But are there areas where progress can be made? Absolutely. But I think it's important to recognize that they're independent. Unless there is a dramatic change that is more than I'm thinking maybe being considered, that we will continue to have those elected officials who need to be able to be responsive to their constituents, just like all elected officials are. I'm sorry, I'm not sure that I'm answering, but I think there is some area there, but as we slice and dice it, there's different pieces to the question. So, okay. Real quickly, I do want to point out at the bottom of this slide, and I'm going to move a little quicker here, that we've got home detention there. We've been working with our partners in the county attorney's office and the sheriff's office. Our next step is to come and talk with all of you about that home detention option. We look forwards to doing that. We plan on doing that with you. We hope we can answer any questions that anybody may have. We really do appreciate the folks that we work with in the county attorney's office, the public defender's office, the sheriffs. We touch a number of other county entities, and I'm thrilled with the relationship that we have with all of them. Facilities, let's talk. Oops. Oh, no. Okay, let me jump back for a second. We're going to be quick on this, but we've got new chief justices coming in next summer. He will, in the next few months, publish his five-year plan. These are the five points that that five-year plan will cover. This is a preview of the things the courts are going to be talking about over the next number of years under his leadership. Time standards, we've touched on. Fair justice legislation, we've touched on. There's home detention. The ITR Center, we're excited about the possibilities that opens up for us to continue to do our work better. And there's the partners that I already mentioned, and we appreciate their working with us. All right. I went too far in my notes, but the new building that we're talking about, the Southeast Complex, we've got four courts that are still independent stand-alones. This facility would allow us to finally get the last four co-located, at least, in the same property. We appreciate that opportunity, and I want to read to you this one part. We absolutely respect that funding at a county level comes through the board of supervisors. We respect and we share, I think, all of your goals for customer service. I want to commit to you that this organization wants to work with all of you to that end and with this new facility to make it the very best that we can. We learn every time we do something. We're no different than anybody else. We've learned with the last building that was built that there are some areas we can be a little better at. We also have learned that there are some really good things in every one of the facilities that we want to be able to replicate. But we certainly want everybody to feel good about this project as it moves forward. If there's questions, please let us know. If you'd like to see those nuances that go on behind the counter, to get those 337,000 cases managed in a timely fashion with the increased timeframes that AOC is asking us to do, we'd love to show you that. Let us be helpful if we can. We've got some great news. We're doing a computer refresh, not because we want new computers, but because the old ones won't run the software that we need to put on them. But we've got some great news with this. That number is now outdated. That 450, we're going to be able to maybe cut in about half by replacing only some components in the existing computers to be able to run the new software. But we need to for our electronic filing on the civil cases. We need to change the software. We don't like to do something just to do it, but there is a fundamental reason. We think we have the funding, though, to be able to manage this. We look forwards to trying to continue. We talked last year about physical facilities and safety a lot. Those projects we talked to you about last year should be completed this year, this fiscal year. We continue with some of our older buildings to try to be careful and keep people in the safest position as possible. We look to improve operations by taking advantage of technology wherever we can. And I think we're out of time probably, but we've got another slide. There was an article in the newspaper on New Year's Eve talking about new changes starting January 1. Three of the eight items in the newspaper impact us. We are constantly changing as the legislature reinvents the will that we work in. Are there any questions that we can answer?
Questions from my colleagues. Additional questions? Yes, Supervisor Gallardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Judge, this is my fifth budget process I've gone through, but the previous four processes, the leadership of the courts sat in those very chairs, and they mentioned to us that every time that the hardest or the biggest obstacle that the courts faced right on the justice court was retaining their employees, they would be hired by you all, they would be trained, they would work, and then they would move on to Phoenix or another municipality because of wages. I see nothing in this presentation talking about wages, retaining employees, or anything like that.
Isn't that nice?
Our 3% goes so far, but that's... I mean, I don't see anything.
And I do want to reiterate what I heard this morning, how appreciative we are for the pay-for-performance, the 3% last year. We appreciate last year the flexibility that this body shared with us to be able to take some of the positions that we have as clerks, basically, and no one was fired, but when they became vacant, take that savings and apply it and get some raises for the clerks. Are we always probably going to be paying less than the municipalities? Yes, sir, we probably will always be in that boat. We are always going to struggle to some degree that we are the training ground and that some of our people will move on. I had that same situation in the assessor's office. I trained people, got them experience and an understanding, and then they went on to other things. But we are not... We are in a much better place this year than we were last year. Is it perfect? Heaven's no. Is it a constant battle and something we try to work with carefully? Absolutely. But it was kind of fun not to have to talk about it this time because of your willingness to work with us last cycle, and we really appreciate it.
Anything else? All right. Well, thank you. Thanks for all that you're doing there. Great presentation. Thanks also for giving us a heads-up on some things that are coming, maybe not in this fiscal year, fiscal year '20, but maybe beyond. So, thank you very much for all that you do, and please pass on to all of your colleagues how much we appreciate justices of the peace.
Mr. Chairman members, if I can echo what Mr. Peterson said right before lunch, I made a special thank you to Supervisor Barney. We like all the rest of you, but you're not leaving, but thank you for all that you do.
Thank you very much. All right. Next, we are going to the constables. Yes.
Actually, I'll take this with me. Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I had a meeting that started 15 minutes ago, so I'm sorry. I'll make sure that I get all the information that you guys want me to hear. Mr. Fontes is here, so sorry, I can't stick around for both presentations, but if you'll share your information with my staff, I'd appreciate it. Sorry, guys.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. I'm Tim Motor. I'm the constable's administrator, and I apologize, the preservers are both down mandatory training this week, so I've recruited Constable Lester here to come sit with me on this. So, if you have no objections, I'll probably be doing the bulk of the presentation.
That's your time. So, you guys do whatever you'd like.
Just a quick review... Make sure I got the right button here. Quick review of calendar 2018. The number I show up there for the total cases attempted and served per their logs through November was 29,088. I got the final number, which was up to 31,544, which is approximately a 10% increase over the previous year. Our numbers kind of bear out what the justice courts just showed. Our writs of restitution were up about 4%, which is, again, our evictions, the riskiest thing, probably one of the riskiest things we do. Order protection was pretty much flat at the 2530, and the orders to show cause continued to increase by about 14%, which I think, like we discovered last year, was probably under the fair justice initiative. Foreign program is still active year-to-date, conception-to-date, 2011-to-date, 3,155,000. Mandated training, we're 100% compliant for the constables through the Constable's Ethics Board, log submission through, again, Arizona revised statute, they're 100% compliant through the year. And just FYI complaints heard by the Ethics Board, last year, we had zero for Maricopa County. FY19, service fees year-to-date through November, we're at 679,000. That's about 80,000 over our projection. And we continue to use the Ethics Board grant source for the bulk of our training and equipment, just about all of it. Mandated training, so far, we've spent about $51,000 of their money for the training and equipment. We had five new constables, which I'll talk about in a little bit. And so, to get them up to speed, we're spending about $8,700 to get them equipped. And updated safety equipment, we updated AS, the Milo machine, which is a shooter simulation machine, and to a cost of about $12,000. And again, that all came out of grants funds. FY19, the results of the election, FY19, the results of the election, where we have brought in five new constables, downtown, San Marcos, Kyren University, and North Valley. I think they're all, they're spread out throughout the valley. So, all the supervisors are seeing new constables in their districts. We do, we're going through our second term of presiding constables. Mike Brennan was elected as the presiding constable in June, July of this year, of last year. So, he's our second one, and so, we're going through that, and I'll talk about that a little bit at the end. So, that's... Personally, I think, and I guess I'm biased, I think that program is running very well, having one source, one person. FY20, just our budget, I mean, it's very simple. Most of our money goes towards personal services, salaries, benefits, things like that. Services and supplies, it's probably is 8.7%. And again, most of that goes into fuel, maintenance, and the fund vehicles and the office. Equipment and training, again, very little, 3%. Again, we're using the grant fund for that. In FY20, currently, we are now fully staffed, first time since probably the middle part of last year with some early retirements and things like that that we worked through. So, we are fully staffed. On FY20, fiscal year '20, I just want to talk about the presiding constable and the two presiding constables. Their goal this year is increased training for FY20 and this year right now. They're very concerned about what's going on out on the streets and what we're seeing, and some of the things we're into right now are defensive tactics. We've had issues recently, we've literally had to go hands-on with some people. Awareness training, understand your surroundings. You know, a lot of our people are laymen, they're not ready for this, and we're really trying to push what is going on and what sources are out there prior to the going out and knocking on that door and doing that eviction or issuing that order of protection, things like that. De-escalation training, that's something that we're going to be starting here in the next couple of months, just understand how to talk those people down. Drug identification and fentanyl training. We had an initial rollout with the sheriff's office, it was very well-received through the constables, and we're going to continue that on. The other thing that Mike Brennan was really pushing this year is communication. I think Supervisor Barney kind of addressed it, that sometimes these constables and their offices see themselves as an island, and we're trying to break that down, where especially in the co-located courts, they have so much resources available within that office that use it, they're going to help you. And we're really trying to push that in the standalone courts, and we're getting some pretty good results on that, where I'm getting feedback, where people are backing people up more often, we're getting more active in the communications on the radio, so they're listening for each other and things like that. So, that's Mike Brennan's big push for FY20 is get the training. And I'm not very good at this. Any questions?
Next question from my colleagues.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one. To that point, how often are you having to rely on backup from local law enforcement or the sheriff's office?
I don't have an exact number. We've tried to put together a program where they send me those reports, but it's kind of spotty. I don't think it's a large percentage.
It's been minimal.
It has been minimal, yeah. It just did up there a bit. I can think of three instances in the last month where people have been arrested.
Any other questions? So, I assume, I didn't see it here explicitly, though, you asking for the same amount this year?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure.
I didn't say that.
No, no. I was assuming that, but I'm like, "Well, I didn't want to assume that." And I just want to say, I agree with your comment about having the presiding constable. Of course, that's the only thing I've known as long as I've been there. As long as I've been here, that's how it's been.
Chairman, Supervisor Barney and I know that we had Kevin Jones the first time, and we've worked over some bumpy roads when you were the chairman of the board.
Well, that was at a time where there was changes in the legislature, and frankly, I think it's been, I think it's been helpful to unite the constables in a way that...
I agree, yeah.
We, I think, we've got one of our 26 constables here that I think has helped us become more effective as a county, and they have an elected role, they're officers, and I think it's been productive. So, thank you for your work as a group.
I think they've also found that it is nice to have one force within the organization that can speak for them. But you're always going to have those individuals out there that don't agree with what's being said. But again, that's what happens with 26 elected individuals.
That happens with five. We still like each other, though.
Well, wonderful. Unless there's anything else, thank you. Thanks for keeping it short and sweet.
You're welcome.
Appreciate all that the constables do for Maricopa County.
Chairman, I'd also just like to extend my thanks to Supervisor Barney for all his help in the last couple of years, and good luck in the future.
Pleasure working with you.
All right. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Tim.
Have a good day.
All right. So, now we're to the end, batting cleanup for us. Mr. Fontes from the recorder's office.
Mr. Chairman.
Good to see you.
Thank you. I'm the manager, man of clerk. Ray's going to be joining me up at the table.
How are you?
We've also got, just in case there's questions at the end, Terry Thompson, our IT director, and Sarah from our budgeting that are here to answer questions, along with some other members of our staff. So, Mr. Chairman and members, first and foremost, I want to extend congratulations on taking the gavel. I know I also missed our immediate past chairman's investiture a year ago because it happens, I was at the same conference a year ago that I was at this year at the joint elections officers liaison thing, having a meeting with the United States Postal Service about election stuff.
Wow.
I saw the speech, and I appreciate it to both of you. And I'll start right off the top, the first chair during my tenure, Supervisor Barney, you hold a special place in my heart, sir.
I'm not sure what that means.
Well, we'll start with something like that, because I don't have kittens like the sheriff had this morning.
First time we've heard that reference to Mr. Barney ever, I think, in his six-year tenure.
We are breaking ground here. And speaking of breaking ground, before I get started here, I wanted to thank you all for the item that you did act on this morning, empowering our county manager to do, I think, that assessment at the professional level that did the, our election infrastructure in total, including our voter registration department, the election department, and so forth, needs. Very excited to continue the work that we've been doing. You and I, Mr. Chair, with Supervisor Gallardo, and moving forward with that. That having been said, this budget does assume status quo, and so, what we're looking at as, on the largest scale, is a $6 million over baseline budget. as a, on the largest scale, is a $6 million over baseline budget request. That is a total over three budgets. So we have the Recorder's budget, we have the surcharge budget, which is directed towards Recorder's IT, and then we have the elections budget. You'll be seeing that, including one other little part of the entire conversation, which we cannot ignore, so I figured it was appropriate to talk about today. And I thank you for the indulgence, so let me do that. Our main themes here, well, I think I might be able to, then again, I might not. Okay, Ray, I'll let you do it. No, you, you, no, too far. There we go, okay. So we're talking here, our three basic priorities are staff, security, and service. One very important part of this is that table on the lower left-hand side of slide number two, where we can see that with over half a million new voters in Maricopa County and all the maintenance that's required, particularly just in our voter registration rolls, we can see that we are below the staff that we had 10 years ago. And that's one of the reasons why, from May until right around election time, our voter registration department had to hire 42 temporary employees that were working six days a week for a long time, and that's very difficult. As well, you can see that from 2008, where the permanent early vote list was much smaller than it is now, 10 years later, we had only 27 FTEs in the election department. We've got 29 now. There is a lot of room for growth to get to the best-in-class, we'll be talking a lot about that. Insofar as our infrastructure is concerned, I think it's incredibly important that we frame this appropriately. In 2017, elections were determined to be critical infrastructure by the Department of Homeland Security. We have done everything that we can within our means to make sure that we meet those standards. We have, along with some other folks, we've talked to folks in our audit department and our IT folks, have been very instrumental in laying out the groundwork for making sure that we meet those standards that are necessary for that critical infrastructure designation. That's going to cost a couple bucks, we'll talk about that in a minute.
Mr. Chu, sorry, sorry for interrupting, Mr. Chu created a question.
Mr. Fontes, when you go to some of these national conferences and whatnot, do you know how that 520 compares across the country? So does that put us in the top three of growth of registration?
Yes, as a matter of fact, Mr. Chair, Supervisor, we're, depending on how you slice the apple, we may very well be the second-largest voting jurisdiction in the country. I think we're third. The question is Cook County, Illinois, which has a suburban voting jurisdiction and an urban voting jurisdiction for Chicago proper. Los Angeles County at over 5 million is clearly at the top. And then we're kind of nuts and bolts with Harris County, which is the greater Houston area. Everybody else is a good, solid, further behind us. So we're looking at top three or four without any question whatsoever.
So would you say that growth is aggressive, the 520 compared to how other counties across the country have grown? I mean, I know you're saying net-net, right, we're in the top three, which is
Right.
But of these, so we're talking about these hundreds of people that are moving here every day to Maricopa County, and it sounds like they're registering to vote, I mean, of course, if they're of age.
We have some of the fastest voter registration growth in the United States of America, if not the fastest rate of growth in voter registration going over these 10 years. We haven't seen any jurisdictions that have increased in the raw numbers, and as we all know, we're growing faster than anybody else. So looking forward, we have to pay very close attention to scalability of systems, flexibility of our people, and we also have seen a significant growth in the percentage of our voters who are not only signed up for, but actually voting on the permanent early vote list. As you know, we had a 65% turnout in this primary second-largest election in the history of the state and our county. We're expecting to have the largest election ever in two years, and so we really have to be ready for that. But we are growing very quickly, we have to be ready. Insofar as our enhanced customer service is concerned, I think we look at a lot of the things that are happening. This past year in 2018 annual, we had over 220 public records requests. Some of those are significant, and that also is part of a national trend. There's a lot of analysis and scrutiny going on across election systems nationwide. I think there's some big changes that have happened in New York, we've seen some real scrutiny in Wisconsin and New, North Carolina. This is not going to go away. We anticipate more of this kind of activity, more litigation in these areas. We're talking a lot more with our folks, we're providing a lot more services, more clearly, we have more channels of communication, and so we've got to cover those three main areas, staff, security, and services. As to slide number three, this is critical, and I think this is very, very important. Two presentations ago, Supervisor Gallardo asked the question of wages. We've got individuals who work at our front counter who help customers make policy decisions about the greatest purchases in their lives, when they're filing documents and deciding what other things to do at the Recorder's Office. We're starting those people at $13.40 an hour. These folks don't get fully trained till about nine months into the job. We are competing with fast food chains, and that's not to diminish the people that are working in our office now, but in less than a year, the minimum wage will barely be, we will be competing with the minimum wage, and we can't have this happening. So our request includes a 20% increase in those specific MRTs, so that we can recruit and maintain the folks that we used to be able to. I think it wasn't that long ago when we remember folks coming to the Recorder's Office from title companies, insurance companies, and law firms. We don't get those folks anymore. They just won't come to work for us for the wages that we're paying, and their experience and their know-how is no longer part of what benefits our customers. So I think this is a very critical part of it. So we'll go to the first of the three budgets very quickly. Our above baseline request, we're 1.1 plus million dollars, includes four new FTEs in voter registration to cover some of the shortcuts I mentioned earlier, one new FTE for a custodian of public records, which is absolutely vital. We're splitting that among several other people, and that's a very difficult thing to do when they're already stretched in other areas. We are hoping to have a constituent services correspondent, there's nothing better than providing great service to the folks who we're talking to. We need a new FTE for our GIS mapping services, because customers are demanding more maps of all things. Additionally, one of the things that you mentioned, in fact, in your speech that I read, Mr. Chairman, was the idea of big data and how we utilize it and where it goes. Our GIS department is one of the best in the state, and they are a resource for all kinds of services, including the United States Census, all kinds of other geological and other surveying services, speak with our mapping department, so we'd like to get them beefed up just a little bit. And of course, the pay increase that I spoke to in the last slide is on the bottom line. If we go to slide five, we will see the surcharge budget. Again, the surcharge budget is based on a $4 fee, that is a statutory fee added to our recording fees. What we'd like to do is sort of correct something that I'll be talking about a little bit later, and push some of these monies back and forth where they need to be. What we have to have is a server refresh, this is a security issue. One of the main things I talked about when getting elected was really kind of hardening the shell around the county Recorder's Office and all the personal data and financial data that our records hold. This is a critical part of that, and we'd also like to, I'll talk about that $941,000, and why we have to switch that over to the elections department very soon. If we go to slide six, and at any point, if anybody wants to stop me and ask a question, that's more than welcome. This is the plus one. I mentioned three budgets, this is the plus one. Now, we're steeped in the discussion with our procurement department. I know many of you, including our manager, came down during the course of the election to watch our operation, and were a little bit, I think, concerned about wood blocks and packing tape, making our machine go. This $25 million is a cap, it is a one-time expenditure if it needs to work the way we need it to work through a regular procurement. What we'd like to do is open up, and we're working directly with the procurement office, so that we can make sure that we get what we need to fill in the gaps. It includes some IT stuff that we need. We are operating on a system that was purchased in 1996, and this system is well out of date. I think you all probably remember pretty well, where Ms. Purcell came, I think it was 2013 or 14 to the board and said, "Get ready, here it comes." Well, here it is. I think she also mentioned that last November when we were talking about the elections as well. So this is what she was talking about. Now, we're working very closely with the procurement office. We just got some information today about some, some options that we have to get from the generation of equipment that we're in, into the generation of equipment that is possible. I won't go into too many details there, but I'm happy to talk in more detail about this soon. We're using this more as a placeholder, but it's important to this overall discussion because of what happened this morning and the work that we're continuing with. I want to make sure that this is part of our sort of overall picture for you all to consider as you move forward with all of the rest of the budgets.
And I appreciate that, when, just the, you know, 30,000-foot level. So looking at the $25 million number, does that include both the replacement of the central tabulation system and the tabulators at the precinct locations? That's all in soup to nuts?
Yes. Yeah, that's our, that's our, that's our big number if we go, if we go Cadillac. Right. All right, and if we can go to...
When you say go Cadillac, there's not a wide, there's not a wide range. I can say you go, because they don't make him anymore.
Yeah, yeah.
You go in a Cadillac, there's not that there's a...
But without getting too technical, there's, there's a series of, we're in the middle of a...
There's different approaches, which have different cost implications with the actual technology itself.
The critical component here that a lot of folks don't think about is the certification. Under state law, we have to have equipment that is certified by the EAC. Now, the EAC just sat its last two commissioners, so they can finally adopt the work that Ray was on, when he was on that National Committee for Standards, under the EAC, to adopt the new guidelines. The, what is out there and available right now fall between systems that were released in 2013 and back in years, all the way back to probably into the late 90s. So when I say Cadillac, I'm talking about the latest one that came out under the current guidelines and certification standards that would be best-in-class now, but we don't have the new rules yet, and we don't have the new development done yet. So we're actually probably talking about a middling approach for the next couple of cycles, which will be less than what we're looking at now, and then, so there's a longer-term plan that's involved there, but I did want to put it on the radar so we can have that discussion as we move forward with the work that our manager will be doing here soon. All right, so, and so far as the over baseline request for the election department, I'm actually going to let Ray talk mostly about a lot of this stuff, since it's such a big request, I don't want to get stuck with it. He'll deal with that in another two slides, I'm sure he'll do just fine. But these are the numbers. Now, I do want to make one statement very clear. In fiscal '19 so far, from 1 July 2018 to 31 December 2018, this is the last six months of last year, the first part of this fiscal year, the election department spent $756,000 in overtime. That's not for basic temps, that's not for election workers, that's our staff, not salaried, that had to work that much more time. When we start looking at positions to hire into the election department to get where we need to go, we cannot avoid but to take into consideration the human cost that that dollar amount represents. The accuracy, the capacity to actually do the job well, that's a huge number. Only 137,000 of that was in voter registration. That is regular hourly staff working 3/4 of a million dollars over overtime.
Mr. Fontes, is any of that offset by the $25 million on the page prior to this? Does that technology help offset any of that, or no? It doesn't sound like it does.
It could. It could, in certain circumstances, depending on what that technology actually does and how we choose to deploy the technology.
So would, would some of that staff time be diminished this year since we're not in an election year?
It is, well, yes, without question, Mr. Chair, Supervisor. But the reality is this, when you are pushing your folks so hard, because you don't have enough FTEs to get folks to come in and just do the job, you've got to get someone to do two, three, and four jobs worth of work, you're not going to get good work out of those employees. You're not going to have best-in-class performance. That number reflects those folks that we should have had other jobs for.
So you want to narrow the scope, you want to get more people to share that scope of work, so it's not one person doing it.
What we would like, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Supervisor, what we would like is to have our subject matter experts executing the work that they are subject matter experts in, and not somebody else's job, because we need the help over there. Right? We just want to have that happen.
But Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Chairman Adrian, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, I think just the nature of the beast, the nature of the, of the task, you're always going to probably have overtime. Now, to what level? I don't know. I don't know what, what the levels of overtime in previous years, but you're always going to have that level of overtime. And again, I think, again, the nature of just the business of connecting elections, you're going to have folks wearing multiple hats, you know, helping out here and there just to get the task done. So I'd be curious to see, compared to the 700,000, what was the overtime in previous years? And, and if, if there were FTEs added, I think there is, there is a request here, how much would you reduce the overtime? Because I think you always have overtime, it's just, it's just the nature of business.
So, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Supervisor, I don't disagree that there've been, that Maricopa County Elections Department has consistently had tons and tons of overtime, but we've also had tons and tons of problems with elections, and that's why we're going through the exercise we're going through. What we're talking about is putting into place an infrastructure, human resources that allows us to do the job at the best-in-class level, and that's what these requests are based on. I absolutely think that the conversation should be had, and your questions should be answered, but at this, at this point, this is kind of what we're putting forward. And the last one before I turn it over to Ray is sort of a quick explanation of the enhanced infrastructure that we're speaking to. We absolutely have to work through and enhance our disaster recovery circumstances. We've got some software, including, I think, one of the things that Supervisor Chucre spoke to was the signature verification software that'll create some efficiencies there. We don't know how much the efficiencies will be created, but that's really a part of our IT infrastructure that we're looking at. Clearly, with our site books and our ballot-on-demand printers that are very popular with our voters, we're going to have some enhanced ongoing costs for that. And again, this is all a part of maintaining that critical infrastructure setup that we've got with the Department of Homeland Security, so.
Supervisor Chucre. Mr. Fontes, to that point, is there anything that you've seen, I mean, are we, are we somewhat draconian by requiring, by still utilizing signature verification? I think some of that's regulated by the federal government, could be, or by DOJ. But isn't, I mean, if you could open your phone with your fingerprint, is there something better, I mean, especially if we're going to spend this money, right, the $25 million? Is there a better way of doing it that you're aware of by way of technology?
So at this stage of the game, and I think Ray could probably chime in, this is sort of the industry standard, this is the best practice, and this is what a vast, I won't say a vast majority, but a lot of the jurisdictions that are moving and actually developing into new systems are developing into a system that we employ pretty robustly. The leaders in this obviously are ballot-by-mail or vote-at-home states like Oregon and Washington and now Colorado, but this is, this is where the industry is going. We don't have the sort of a little more biometric sort of a question that you've got. I think those technologies are in their nascent stages at this point in time. But interestingly, if you look at some of the, some of the data, a physical signature is actually, can very easily be considered biometric, because of the nature of the human physiology and muscle memory, the way that works out, and the variety of factors that are engaged in that observation, that adjudication of those signatures. And just like IEEE says, and I've mentioned before, it's far more secure, frankly, than photo ID at the polls. And so, so we're, we're in a place, we've been in a place, and will continue to be in a place in the near future, that is sort of industry standard at this time. I agree with you, there may be possible ways to get better, but at this point in time, I don't see any of those technologies emerging in any time, anytime soon, or at least not to have any impact here for the next several cycles. And I'll turn it over to Ray.
Yep. Chairman, members of the board, and to elaborate a little bit on that question, some of the stuff, and similar to with the thing of our technology that's out there, why are there only three vendors? Why isn't Elon Musk doing something? Because that certification kind of straps the requirement, the same is true, like online voting, there are companies that do online voting internationally, it's not allowed for, for federal elections, it's not allowed for. Biometrics, to its extent, is theoretically not allowed for under the pretense of equal access. How do I get, you know, a mail ballot to a voter and allow them to not have to sign it? So there's a lot of that for federal, we're strapped by the federal requirements that say, and some of them good, bad, we know our federal form issue that we have, so just so you know that it's not as easy as saying, let's be innovative. You do have to, for the federal elections, still have to answer to that.
So Ray, along those lines, though, I mean, our signatures change, I don't think fundamentally, but they change over time. And with all due respect to some of the elderly population, you know, their, their hand isn't as steady. population, you know, their, their, their hand isn't as steady. Some of my constituents are concerned that maybe they didn't vote, right, by virtue of their signature not matching. I think we notify them if that's the case. Is that 1% or 2% when it comes to the verification?
Chairman Supervisor, it actually is even less than. It's 0.00. Our current general election with 1.1 million early ballots returned, we were 307 signatures didn't match. That's where we're at.
307?
307 signatures that were individual, and I can, and I can tell you now because it's part of my oversight of that election process to make sure every ballot vote count is those 307 I've gone through myself two to three times a say. And they are, John Doe that signed Frank Smith's packet, that's why it didn't match. But there is very few that we didn't take, especially with the new consent agreement that we made with LULAC to go extend that after, that if you cast this ballot, we may have exactly as you said, a signature from 1986 that you, when you got your license when you were 16 and has a smiley face over the eye. So don't look at my signature from 1986. But I know that is an example for this. It doesn't mature. And now it's individuals that stay home a lot longer. So it may be that you not move. The minute you move, you would, we would get an updated signature. That's why we're not in that circumstance where individuals moving, they need to register, we get a new signature. So we have several samples. We have technology now that is allowing us to capture even more. When you check in at the polling place, then you decide, all those polling place check-ins, we can look at those signatures. We are even looking at, and if we can get some legislation, looking at recording deeds and such that we, we don't want to disenfranchise. But 307 out of...
That answers. I mean, 307 answers the question of itself. I did have one constituent which I thought was interesting. You've got to take it with a grain of salt that said she was concerned about her signature being stolen, like identity theft or something from the US Postal Service for all people. But, I mean, because that's who's really going to see it, I guess maybe in the process. Have you heard anything about, have you ever heard that concern?
We've heard those concerns, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Chukri. We've heard lots and lots of concerns, but we do have, you know, our capacity for voters to come and just drop their ballots off at vote centers ahead of time and on election day. As you know, we get a lot of those early votes dropped off. Folks want the sticker and we may come to you for some supplemental funding for more stickers. But, you know, there's a lot of, put it this way, we've engaged in a PR campaign to a degree called Mythbuster Mondays. And there are a lot of folks out there with a lot of theories about a lot of stuff. And some of the concerns are real. Some of the concerns are based in things that may not be. But we want to take very seriously our communicative efforts. And that's one of the reasons why our services are so important. Because when we get these concerns, as you do in your offices, we want to be able to address them in a timely manner that really gets to the heart of it and treats all of those constituents like the customers they should be treated as.
Thank you Supervisor Barney. Just to kind of continue with that conversation, there's the concern of voter disenfranchisement. There's also the concern of voter fraud, which are kind of inverse ends of spectrum in a way. You know, signatures are duplicated all the time. That's where I kind of have a hard time. Our, we're using human capacities which is infinite until it's not to verify signatures, right? And, and all, right now today, there's kids that are home playing Ferris Bueller because their mom signed a note that she didn't sign. And there's banks that are, there's checks that are processed with the same human signature verification and even an extra layer of machine verification. Checks that are cashiered and clear the bank all day either fraudulently or with the permission of the actual signer. I know this because it happens in my office. Hey, you're not here. Come, we sign this check. And the check without my signature, but one that looks very much like mine goes through. And it's not illegal because it's done with my permission, but nobody ever flies it. How do we know? And I think that goes to your question. Right now, it may be our best approach. This isn't personal to this great team here back here. It's just, is there something better? Because I'm, I'm confident that we have more than 317 ballots that slipped through with signatures that may not have actually been signed by the person whose name is on the envelope, yet it matches a signature and it went through. How do we, how do we know? This isn't a Republican or Democrat question. This is a voter election question. How do we know that we have better systems than what have been slipping through hundreds of attendance offices at schools and thousands of banks for a long, long time using the same methodologies that we're relying on in our election department?
But I think, Mr. Chair and Supervisor, I think Ray's about to tell you why we're not using the same methodologies.
Well, but it is the same.
Chairman Supervisor, the fact of the matter is, is that in the example you're giving, the individual Ferris Bueller himself has a signature that's known to him. He knows that signature. So there's several different layers of fraud. One is you robbed the mailbox and you took my ballot. You would have no way to substantiate or, or my signature. When we're looking at on the backend, when you registered to vote, we are doing multiple things on top of certifying that you are a valid individual, human being, registered voter or a citizen, all those things under the state form. We are testing your address. We're using address checks. We're doing all this stuff to put you on the roll to say you were first and foremost, you are an absolute individual, 18 years old, citizen and so on. And we get that signature sample. So when we get that back from you, if, if using the scenario that it's, you took mine, there is absolutely no way theoretically for you to have stolen that without knowing my signature. Son to, to mother, mother, husband to wife. That is a scenario where they, you know, could. But in that circumstance, it's the same as saying that, go ahead and vote my ballot. If it's known to me, there is that potential. But it's the same, that doesn't get removed by biometrics. It doesn't get removed. My wife, I tell her to vote for me, does not mean here's my, now she may cut my thumb off.
I get the familiar, sorry to interrupt. I get the familiarity argument, but all the time, people say, I need a copy of your driver's license. Copies of people's driver's license which have signatures are all over the place, all over the place. So somebody can have a copy of a driver's license. They don't know me. They're not related to me. It's not Ferris Bueller. It's not somebody in my office. You know, they could have, they could get my ballot and find my, the truth is, your, your, your signature is not sacrosanct like it used to be, just like your social security number isn't.
But Chairman Supervisor, then, then that lends itself to the question, how did you get my ballot? Even if I got a copy of my driver's license, how did I get the ballot mailed?
You stole it, is what you're saying.
You would have to do such a, a, Oceans 11, excuse, but to the extent, but it, because even if you have my license, I now, this packet is mailing to a tested address. So you would have to intercept that.
So now you're to the statistical improbability?
Correct. And where we rely...
What is that number?
Where we rely is...
It's more than 317.
Yeah. We have not had, in the, in the, in my career, Chairman Supervisors, where we have had a call where an individual says that, I see that my ballot's been returned and that was not me. So in other words, it's because the address is tested, we have had a call that, where we're calling them saying the signature doesn't match. And we have had that son to daughter vote. Well, my son's at NAU and he sort of signed this. Well, he didn't. So we, we called the son and say, do you want to prosecute?
This is a tall goal.
Prosecute your mother because we know it not to be true. So that sample, the sanctity of that, at least the signature to a known signature, it does hold up because of the other pieces.
Other checks in the system.
Checks and balances in the system. But you're right, there is a way, but it usually ends up being where when you did all of those, that driver's ID catch for me, you caused a vote, you hope that I don't come back to it, but you need to do that times 10,000, times 100,000 in it.
What about, what about just one time, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, no, short time.
My, my dad passed away 10 years ago, just in the last couple of weeks. Just at the end of last year, I got a voter registration card for my dad. Now, we share the same name. Dennis, now he's T. Dennis, I'm C. Dennis. I've got it sitting on my desk. Trying to figure out, at what point do we start to cross check that? And how many years have to elapsed? Now, it wasn't an awkward moment. I didn't have a breakdown. I mean, I miss my dad. I think about him every day. But in my mind, you guys know me well and so I'm thinking, how am I getting this 10 years after? You know, my dad was at that address. It was our office address. It was a known address to Dennis Barney 10 years ago. How do we, and, and I know I'm not, this is not a tinfoil hat kind of guy because I've got the notice on my desk. How do we figure that out? How do we know that we're not, you know, getting, you know, those kind of things? And, and so, we don't have to get there today. Today's the budget conversation. We've got a working group that's going to dig in and bring lots of good, which hopefully great professional staff input. But I'm, I'm optimistic. All I'm saying is it's not as cut and dry as we'd like it to think because there is, there's fail safes in the systems and there's fails in the system. And it's not personal to this recorder or the previous recorder or this election. It's just the dynamics of millions of pieces of paper and people and signatures and things bouncing around. And so I'm articulating the very concerns that you've referenced, Mr. Fontes.
Yep.
All I'm saying is that I'm not there yet. And I recognize that I won't be here two weeks from now to go on my little diatribes about it if that's what this is. It's not. I'm just saying that, that I, I don't have, I don't lack confidence in our team. I'm just, I, I look at the Herculean task and it's going to take all of the great minds sitting around this table now and many others that aren't. Because it's not as simple as we, you know, we, we talk in absolutes. Well, an absolute system wouldn't have sent me, sharing the same name as my dad, a voter registration card to T. Dennis Barney who passed away 10 years ago. So there, the system isn't communicating across the entire world that we navigate. And I, and I'm, I'm not making it up. It's real. And, and so that's all I'm suggesting. And this is not part of this budget conversation. But when we start going down this path of absolutes, that's when the hair on the back of my neck starts to stand up. Because it's not just because of voter disenfranchisement or having a sad day because somebody reminded me my dad passed away, or it's the voter fraud concern. And that's real. And there's other markets that deal with that. And I, and I think we can't assume ourselves to be immune. And that's the end of mine.
It's a good, it's a good issue. It's not a diatribe at all. It's, it's very important because there's nothing more fundamental than this. So I appreciate you.
And I know the recorder shares that same view.
I, I absolutely do. What concerns me the most is that it went to a business address.
I will bring it to you.
And Chairman Supervisor, that's what I was going to get to. Because here's, one of our key things is to educate. We actually had notices that were mailed that are not us. So I want, I would like to see, because we, you should have gotten a voter ID card every two years for your father if that were the case, from us. I believe it to be a notice that looks official. We had, and we actually put it on Facebook. There were three or four mailings that said, your, the election is November 20th. It's not even three weeks out. That said from the elections. So I believe, and I honestly, if we get that notice...
I will get it to you.
And the downfall is that there was an organization that grabbed a list that was more than outdated. And they were mailing to people that have their dogs, puppies named, you know, Scotty Dodd, something. So I believe, I honestly, wholeheartedly, I'd love to see that because you should...
I'll get it to you, Ray.
And that's where we need to do a better job, educating, to make sure that we do a lot of the community relations and so on.
So, so let's talk about how much help Ray needs.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know we got to go on. Sorry. I wasn't trying to get into the rabbit hole.
Then I, I will jump through this pretty fast because I know this is just a preliminary proposal. Some of this is just saying what we believe we need. So first and foremost, we're going to jump through these slides. I want to point out that the new positions are in yellow, the existing are in blue. Some of these new positions, basically why they're critical. We don't have to go too far back, other than the 2018, to see what we had going. We know as the recorder mentioned, we're going to have a, a, the largest election we will ever see in 2020. I, we know that. The, the data from this midterm that was larger than several decades is just going to point to the fact that we will see this replicated twice over if not, you know, at that extreme. And the one thing like death and taxes that we know in elections is turnout will increase if, from the midterm to a presidential. Turnout, voter registration, people, all of that's going to increase. When that does, and some of the stuff to, as Supervisor Galardo was speaking to, well, how overtime, that does exist. But some of the stuff we know for a fact, we cannibalize, some of our staff to the extent to say, you as, in this level here, you as an administrator have been demoted down to being in a snag board. Our snag board manager was Recorder Fontes. Our duplication manager was Deputy Recorder Matt Morales. We, so we cannibalize this. We've done this throughout our community relations. We're not doing community relations. They were actually doing training. Because it gets down to a point of when you start in, and, and not that this is bad, but when we start investing in technology, it requires a different level of subject matter expertise in the, in the office. We can't just bring an attempt to run a new tabulator that is not as simple as push a button. But, but just so, keep that in mind that we're looking at these, these staffing requests to, again, to borrow that best in class terminology to say, this is what we can and how we need to get there with known data from the 2018 election. So here is the administration part of it. And what we're looking to is we, as I mentioned, we have administrators that are overseeing tasks when they should be in fact be planning and project management. With, that's kind of the committee we're going to be sitting down. We want to be able to look at, at best practices. We want to be able to look at better things. But if they're sitting at a snag board and, and so on, when we should have somebody else that is dedicated to that task, that's where we're, this will help us get there.
So, Mr. Chairman Supervisor.
I'm not hungry.
A snag board is the result.
Oh, I'm, I apologize.
That's okay. A snag board is the result.
I heard snag bar. And I'm like, is that somewhere between a snag bar and snag?
It's a, it's, it's a function that if we get a, a new tabulation system, there's a very high likelihood that we won't be needing that anymore. And I won't be having to manage, you know, 30 pairs of folks in the warehouse.
But you would, you would have a full-time employee to do snag board?
No, what I'm seeing is, is with, that task was, because we need it, we, and Chairman Supervisor, what we did is we had, as an example, over 4,000 individuals. You've seen the Ventright ad. We were having people come in just to get through these duplications, these overvotes. He said, the snag board, is something hit a snag? They're reviewing that. Is this a true overvote? That it's not a, if it is, then put it back. If it's not, that goes away with new equipment. You adjudicate that. The machine does that for you. It says, look at it, adjudicate it, don't out stack it, scan it, have a human being. But no, we wouldn't have, we'd have a task assigned to some of the folk that, but make them an SME, make them a subject matter expert. So that it isn't reliant on somebody that should be doing something else in multiple things. So, so at administrative level, this is where we're asking for, because in some of these of you highlight, the training, some of the things that we were, what we perceive deficiency or even real deficiency, training. The board workers weren't trained right. Because they were trained by the individual who's in charge of doing voter registration, not training. We have to create that position. We have to engross that individual with all of the things they need to know to train that board worker to do a better job. That's a deficiency that was pointed out by the, some of the boards not doing what they needed to do. You look at some of the logistics of getting the delivery of supplies or when there's an emergency. We have the plan. We, but we need the people. We have the plan for when we have got locked out of a facility. We needed to be able to execute that. We'll go grab a driver. It literally came down to every driver is out, including the accountant, our accountants were on a truck. So we need to stop doing that. We need to stop, we need to say, plan for that, bill for that. This is the best in class. So again, that is the administrative and I will, I apologize, I would try to go through because again, we reserve some time for questions. This is the ballot tabulation. All we're noting there is additional ballot processing tech. That comes down to, with your grace and goodness to say we are within that tabulation system, then we probably are saying, we want to tabulate a night. We want to have a night shift. We need, not want to, we need to. And some of this will help us get to that point. So this is just a base ask to say, more technicians to run more machines, new tabulation equipment may require setup, implementation, and to some extent, new tabulation equipment, although it seems, should be better, it is, but it's also not as fast as our old. So we, from 12 central counts to 24 central count machines, you've been down to our facility. So we expand that, two operators per, that's 48 people. We need techs to help manage that.
I appreciate you pushing this forward. We're going to start turning into pumpkins by 3:30 for sure. So thank you.
So I'm just going to, I'm just going to quickly flash through here. This is our director's services. We're just talking about better services to the candidates, which you all are and many, we want to be able to give you what they need in jurisdictions and the parts. We had a lot of observers come in. We want them to be able to be managed. This is the one, again, mission critical, training. I just, we do not have this. You can see, we don't have the support staff. We robbed individuals, again, to do that. So this is one of the key things that answers, again, the perceived deficiency or absolute deficiency in training our board workers. Logistics. Right now, we have the three modes of elections that the reporter talked about. We have by mail, we have our vote center, and then we have our election day. So this right here, our vote center is whether we go all mail or not, we operate it. It's a service that voters use. We need to be able to make sure we're ramping up on those vote centers, at least as far as the staffing to become subject matter expert. Again, the higher technology equipment requires more expert staffing. And this is where we're at. The other deficiency that all of the boards here, that all of you as supervisors help with is facility management. We want to go, we want to acquire those faster and more efficient. You, some of the chiefs of staff help us with that. We want to have a direct contact for that, to be able to better serve that. Last but not least is the early voting. I don't need to say anymore. Early voting, we've already talked about that, that it is the wave of the future. And even at that, if we were talking about 84% of our election being caused or passed by the early voting, whether we go all mail or not, this is a process that we need to be focused. Even if in this committee, and we decide that early voting needs to go here, this needs to be a, something that didn't exist in 2008. 2008, we had 250,000 early ballots. 2008, we had 250,000 early ballot requests singular, we're up to 1.6. I am absolute, 2008, we had only 250,000 early ballot requests for that 2008 election, with those 17 FTEs. So now you say, well, you, or you, why do you need to increase? Because this is a whole new task that has developed after 2008. People came into place 2007, first election 2008, you had to sign up. Now we're at 1.6 million people, it's its own division.
So from 250 to 1.6?
Yes, yes. Within that period. And I am absolute and confident that, put it down here, that in 2020, we will have 1.8 million people on people with the growth that we're seeing now. So we're talking about 1.8 million permanent early voters, early ballots going in the mail, that come back, and is, again, one of our perceived deficiency, how fast can you process them?
Any idea, Ray, how many come back through mail and how many come back on election day as handed in?
Absolutely. We had, we had 168,000 that were dropped off at the polls. We just did some numbers, thank you to our PR folks that we were looking at, 168,000 dropped at the polls. On Tuesday, we had drop-ups, because we had those vote centers, and Monday, so we had count those as also being dropped off, not so much, but there was a total of 400,000 dropped off Monday, the weekend, Monday and Tuesday. So it's a lot. Now, do we service the voter and say, don't drop those off? Or leave them that decision and just ramp up to be the division that it needs to be? And all that, what we're having now is, we're just looking to be able to put, we right now do not have backups for most of our early voting votes. If you're a signature verification, we bring in techs, just as you indicated, we want subject matter experts there, we want a system, and we're looking at technology.
I'm out of time, Mr. Chairman, just to request, not to, you responded to now, but you included, on slide 15, you include, and this is referencing the 80% early voting in terms of actual ballots cast, massive increases from 250 to 1,600,006. We're creating comparisons to Harris King, Sandywood County. We're hoping to know what percentage of their total electorate, the same, the same barometer for them. I mean, we have a note that says, they provide similar vote-by-mail early voting services, but what percentages are those? Because ultimately, that affects the need for additional voter registration, for election day, you know, certainly the functions become siloed, but, but the way that those ballots are received affects how you'd staff an election if you compare to Harris, 739, and we're at 500 and change. So just, just I think, if we're going to use those comparisons, let's compare all of the data points so that, so that we can come back to that for our future-
Chairman Supervisor, thank you, because that's my break, this is the recorder's slide.
I just want to see data.
I just wanted, and we'll, we'll get right past 15, this is for, basically for kind of general numbers reference, we'll clarify those other points as we go forward. Very quickly on 16, these are, this is a brief explanation of some of the reallocations. I just wanted to drop that in there, because we're talking about, what's, the most important point is, under the surcharge, that middle bullet point. ARS 11475.1 stipulates that these surcharge funds are to be utilized for the recorder's office. The audit that we went through late last spring and through the summer, I think, which was the kind of, actually, this was an audit from the last time we got audited, in the prior administration, we have still been using those surcharge funds into the election department. What this does is bring us into compliance with statute, so that's a major shift over there for that particular purpose. The other ones are explained here pretty easily. And then I think the most important point, and you all are very aware of this, we're less than a year away from the 2020 election. The PPE is going to be March 17th, and we will, we will absolutely not have a repeat performance of what happened in 2016. I don't think any of you want that any more than any of us do. We're going to be ready, and I'm very excited to work with you all, with our county manager over here. Joy, I'm excited that you all are going to take the reins of this thing. I'm sending Keely and Ray over to you, so treat them well, and they'll give you all the information you need. But all in all, what we're looking at here is really doing the things that I think our citizens, residents, taxpayers and voters want, and they want us to do the things that we talked about. Again, steal that phrase, be best-in-class. I'm very excited about what the future holds, and I'm most excited about having the opportunity to continue to serve and move forward. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, I don't think you guys have any other questions, because I feel you guys are turning into pumpkins as I sit and look at you.
Having said that, anyone have additional questions? Great presentation, giving us, actually, I think, some, some information to be, be helpful for this, this committee, and appreciate all the questions raised by my colleagues, and again, as well, kind of mirroring what you said at the beginning of this. Thank you, Mr. Fontes, for your willingness to work with us, and I, I'm very excited about what bringing these two teams together can lead to for 2020 and beyond, so, so thank you so much.
All right, thank you, have a great afternoon.
All right, you too. Yes, that's- We're talking about you.
Oh, wow. All right, I bet I didn't leave.
Perfect. Okay, all right, well, we're not quite, not quite done here. So, thank you for, thank you for everyone here, both of my colleagues and, and all the staff, this has been a long, this has been a long week, already.
Leadership is a challenge, I'm not sure, hey, guys?
Waiting for the old days.
Man, if the old days were back.
That's right. So again, I think we've got, as usual, got a lot of information here this week, and some great insights into what's moving forward. We do have, should all have in front of you, some budget guidelines and priorities for fiscal year 2020. And, you know, do, I don't know if folks have any questions on these, otherwise certainly would entertain any motions with regard to this.
Can I see a, I've got one here, too.
So you got it there? Okay, all right, here we go, page two.
So, Mr. Chairman, we're on item two.
We are on item two. That's correct.
And I would make a motion that we adopt these budget guidelines and priorities, and I'm excited by the fact that we can keep the property rate flat, again, I think it's just another indication of doing more with less, and also your leadership, Mr. Chairman, just a few days in, as well as Cindy's ability and Joy's ability to really navigate very, very professionally and masterfully the budgets, and just trying to squeeze every ounce we can out of those, so that is my motion.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, second, any, any further discussion on that item? All right, motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, that item passes unanimously. Now we're going to adjourn as the Board of Supervisors and convene as the Flood Control District. And similarly, I think-
Do we need a motion to that, Madam Carter?
No, sir, he can just, we're done.
I'm blowing and going, I don't know if I do it or not, yeah. Okay, great, so Flood Control District, and we also have some materials as it relates to the Flood Control District, any discussion or any motions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Maricopa County Flood Control District FY 2020 budget guidelines and priorities, as we've all reviewed and have copied before us.
Excellent, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo, unless we have any discussion on this item, then we have motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That item passes unanimously for the Flood Control District, will now adjourn as the Flood Control District and convene as the Library District. And again, we have some materials as it relates to the Library District, and certainly entertain any discussion or any motions with regard to the Library District.
I'm happy to make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
He did a masterful job of that, too, Steve. Perfect, and this is to-
I have my talents. This is to approve the Maricopa County Library District FY 2020 budget guidelines and priorities, as, as is before us today.
Excellent, excellent, and we have a second? All right, any discussion at all on that? All right, motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.